All right, we're going to call this meeting to order.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, April 20th, 2016 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
I would, as we move into our time of silent meditation, that we remember those in our community that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way, those that have lost loved ones in our community since we, excuse me, were last in these chambers. And send out special thoughts and prayers for the youth in our community. This continued violence issue is just, doesn't seem to be going away, obviously, and so we just really need to send out the right thoughts and the right prayers and the right energy to those in our community that are experiencing this violence and those families that are losing loved ones. I also ask our God and our Creator to give us the wisdom and the right information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral law.
Approval of minutes from the meeting of Wednesday, April 6th, 2016, and bills for payment on April 15th and 22nd, 2016. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Murzky.
Any requests for repository sales? Any requests for repository sales?
Evening, Council. My name is Hugh Marshall. I live in 1950 East 20th Street, and I am building on a repository property that is at 2019 East 19th Street, and I have been maintaining it for the last couple of years. As a matter of fact, I've bought seven properties in the neighborhood.
Any questions from council?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Do you plan to build on it or just maintain it?
I plan on building it, but I'm just maintaining it right now.
And you've been maintaining it previously?
Yes.
We thank you for that, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Kwiatowski?
Yes, I'd like to say I know Mr. Marshall from my, I've known him a long time. We did business together when I was in the private sector. He's a man of his word, and I think I'd be glad to support any endeavor he does.
Mr. President, what was the address of the property again?
2019 East 19th.
All right. Thank you. All right. Well, we won't vote on it at this meeting, but we will take that into consideration next meeting. Thank you.
Fine, thank you.
Any other requests for repository sales? Seeing none, we'll move on to our citizens to be heard. The first citizen to sign up ahead of time was Mr. Randy Barnes.
Evening, Council. My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point, Erie, Pennsylvania. I'm here to speak on the, the over $20,000 now has been paid to Mr. Clem for his support down here to support council and support the current city clerk. Just to refresh, for those that aren't aware, that Mr. Clem was a city clerk. He worked at City Hall for 47 years, and when he retired, he received a monthly pension of $5,811, or $69,732 a year, according to city officials. Well, when Mr. Clem retired, there was four city council people that felt that the city council could not function without Mr. Clem's advice because the new city clerk hadn't been trained, and so they decided to vote, and that was the three city council people that are here tonight, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Jones, voted to pay Mr. Clem $1,000 a month for two years. So, we're coming up over, over $20,000 has spent, been given to Mr. Clem to help out council. And my concern is that these three council people have not admitted that, one, the archiving the records was done last year, so we don't need Mr. Clem for that, or, two, that the current city clerk has been trained. So, it concerns me that these three city council people now want to use this backdrop of this new study to extend this man's contract another two years because the money's in the budget. City council budgeted money in order to pay Mr. Clem. It's under the professional services that you budget every year. That's where you're taking the money from, professional services, to hire this professional man that retired to come down and, well, what was it? Mr. Witherspoon said, "He's satisfied with the work that Mr. Clem has done. He's helped prepare resolutions, agendas, and proclamations for the city council and had advised a panel on zoning hearings and contracts." Well, nobody on city council has ever taken the time at the end of the meeting to say that the current city clerk is trained. So, in the public's eyes, council still hasn't overseen the current city clerk getting properly trained, and they don't feel confident to prepare resolutions, agendas, and proclamations without Mr. Clem's help. This is the man that worked here for 47 years, and according to Mayor's Senate, has drawn the largest pension ever paid in the city of Erie, gets an additional $1,000 a month to help prepare resolutions, agendas, and proclamations for city council, or basically is doing the city clerk's job. So, does any one of you three council people want to speak at the end tonight and say that the city clerk is now trained, that you don't need the support of Mr. Clem?
Mr. Barnes, please address council as a whole.
Oh, is anyone on council, specifically the three people that voted for this, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski, or Mr. Jones, would any of you three or any of you seven want to step forward and say, "The current city clerk is trained. We don't need Mr. Clem anymore"? Because until we hear that, the citizens are concerned, again, you're going to want to renew that contract. Because isn't it all about friends and family, taking care of our friends, taking care of our family? Is that what it's about? Because here we are going on almost two years, it'll be two years in July that Mr. Clem left, and no one wants to stand up and say, "The current city clerk is trained." That's a sad, sad state of affairs we have in this council chambers, that after two, almost two years, no one on council will want to say that the current city clerk is trained so that person could prepare resolutions, agendas, and proclamations for city council, and has advised a panel on zoning hearings and contracts. Oh, that's right. That was the dog contract where we were advised that you could vote against it. Throw it against the dog contract. Do we really need this man's help for another two years, or is it just we want to send our friend another $1,000 a month for the next two years? Because the three people, three of the council people that voted for this, Mr. Jones, Mr. Winarski, and Mr. Witherspoon, obviously are still here, they only have to convince one other member to extend the contract. They only have to convince one other member to extend that contract for another two years. Because now with this large study that we have, that Mr. Bukey has presented to us, lays it right on the shoulders of council, council's going to can use it, says, "We need this man more than ever. We are up against a $600 million deficit. We need to invest in the city, and we need somebody to help us prepare resolutions because we can't do it ourselves, prepare agendas because the current city clerk was never trained." It's unfortunate, sad state of affairs, but Mr. Bu-, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Next citizen to be heard is Ms. Amy Copertor.
May it please the council, I'm here today to talk about a higher responsibility to our community. I'm here to talk about the fate of EMTA and the buses and the charter. Most people don't seem to realize that for the past two years, city council and county council both knew the existence of this charter and that its eventual fate. Now, I realize that county council did some really interesting tactics to this council and this body, which, quite frankly, I even find disgusting, that they took those motives and initiatives in the fashion they did. However, there's a time to be concerned about what is good as a body, and then there is a time to be concerned of what is good for the people. If those buses go down in September, you are going to affect schools, which will bus children. You know, those buses bus children. We don't have a lot of independent school buses here. So, you will affect the children of our community. You will affect the people that go from the city to the county for work, or for the county to the city to work. You will affect families by not renewing this charter because once their jobs are gone and not able to get the transportation to these places, then their homes, their livelihoods, their children will be at stake. People that are wearing in the audience green and blue tonight are in support of the EMTA, and it's going on. We do not want the city to stop having service. Our livelihoods, especially in the city, depend upon it. You will be taken away if you do not sign the charter, and I realize this is a two-way communication. It is not just on you. And I will be visiting county council and having a similar discussion. But you will also be affecting the livelihood of people. Eventually, you will be affecting paratransit. You will be affecting the lift. You will be affecting people being, just being able to get out, to get to work, to get to their medicines, to get to medical care. This city, if you think the city is in a big enough economy drop as it is, this whole thing will fall on our economy because nobody will be able to transport themselves. It is a dysfunction between the two councils. I wish somebody would be grown up enough on both councils to stand up, be a leader in this, and be able to act like grownups. I had just seen a member of this body and a member of the other body work at the United Way. What a beautiful thing that was to see you all in cooperation. Can't you bring that cooperation here? We need you. We really need you. You're our representatives. We elect you. We elect you to do this so that you represent us as citizens. As a citizen, we shouldn't have to come to you in this kind of magnitude to get our point across to you. We ought to know what our needs are. You ought to be able to respect us. We have, you are our power. That's why you're up there. We believed in you, that you would do right for us. You can't do right for us by saying we're not going to talk to each other and let this thing fall. If the charter fails and September comes, we won't be able to get it come October. The funding will end. Things will cease. People won't even be able to get out to Pittsburgh, to the Greyhound, to Cleveland, to even be able to get out of this city. You're going to have a dying city, a dark city trapped here. Is that the fate you want for the city of Erie council? I know you better than that. I know a lot of you very personally, and I know that is not what you want for us, but there is a difference between action and inaction, and we are crying out to you tonight. We need your help. How are the disabled going to get around in their motorized wheelchairs, and for how long? People having to go to the Mill Creek Mall, we are regionalized. Anybody who takes the buses knows that it's regionalized, and I thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Up next, Joe Kerlett.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
My name is Joseph K. Kerlett. I'm present CEO of Platinum Resource Development Enterprises. I stand before city council tonight to address two public policy positions of the mayor of this city. But before I go on, I'd like it to be noted that the city solicitor has been absent since the first speaker of citizens to be heard. The two areas of the city administration that has earned low negatives and without any valid justification from the mayor are fiscal management. The other one is effective governance. The mayor has, for the past two years, bowed out and did not fund summer jobs for Erie youth, but instead he relied on the county executive summer jam program and those revenues to be responsible to fund youth inner-city summer jobs in the city and increase the tax receipts going to the mayor's city treasury. And in addition, the mayor failed to provide employment opportunities for Erie inner-city youth who would have been, who would have a viable futuristic option rather than be actively engaged or drawn into the current pandemic of gun violence by youth and young adults. These are vivid and clear examples of the mayor's ineffective and absent governance and its zero attempts at addressing and resolving the critical public and social ills facing the city. And as an elected Democrat, and since Governor Wolf is also a Democrat, the mayor should be politically responsible, supportive, mindful, and aware of state vehicle regulations by ticketing those hundreds of out-of-state licenses and drivers cruising the streets of Erie to bring those additional monies into the state coffers. And you wonder why Erie is not on the map in Harrisburg. We send nothing to Harrisburg. The state law is quite clear and allows a certain timeframe for new Pennsylvania registrations and licenses to be registered, or a penalty will be imposed. The mayor's poor and ineffective governance by public policy abstinence due to a lapse in fiscal responsibility and accountability and his impotent follow-through has a common with losing valuable tax dollars due to the mayor's negligence and failure to enforce state law. The mayor has failed to exhibit strong, forthright, or any out-front leadership on the primary public policy issue of the day, of the day facing the citizens of Erie, who become quite fearful while most public service agencies are being tested to measure up to the challenges of this gun violence crisis paralyzing the city and its residents. The mayor's unwavering position not to, one, put police officers on the streets in the neighborhood, two, his non-aggressive policy to recruit and hire minority police officers, three, create community policing stations as integral components of community police relations, four, institute ongoing department-wide sensitivity training for police officers, and five, his lack of support or interest in a community police review board speaks volumes to his true commitment of his bluntly, his true commitment of bluntly attacking this menacing problem of gun violence. Here we have a clear and absolute but distinct incident of ineffective governance by the Joe Senate administration. The mayor and the Democratic majority on city council could easily enact and pass these measures of grave importance to Erie community if the political will were there to ensure the gun violence problem has its proper focus and importance for eliminating its devastating effects. Have one other comment to make. Heard on the news the other day.
Sorry, your time's up, but thank you. Mr. Kerlett, I always enjoy talking to you. Any other citizens to be heard? Up next, we have Julie Minich.
Hello, my, can you hear me all?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, council members.
Name and address for the record.
Oh, yes, sorry.
It's okay.
Julie Minich, that's M-I-N-I-C-H, 1027 West 37th Street, 16508. And I'm here to talk to you about the EMTA charter. The EMTA charter is very important, and as you notice, a colleague has already spoken on it, and it's gotten a lot of news in the press. And the reason why it's important is because it affects 33% of the Erie community. Let me repeat that. 33% use our public transit system. This charter issue has created a lot of anxiety. Now, I, I've used the 33% a lot, and I'd like to tell you how that number has been founded. First of all, there's 20% that are transient dependent, which means they don't have a vehicle to go to appointments, things like that. But there's another 13% to 15% that use it for convenience. For instance, a lot of college students use the bus to get to class. Now, you may wonder why. It's easy to own a car, but there are expenses. A car, on average, costs $10,000 a year, and if you call the colleges, the average parking fee is $200 per year. When you're in college, $12,000 makes the difference. They can use that money to pay loans. They can, good lord, they can pay rent. So, that's why it's very important that this charter issue be resolved. Now, I know that city council has passed the charter. I realize that. I've emailed a few of you, and I've understood that you passed a 50-year charter and wanted the board to remain the same. I would like you to think about this. County council, and I've spoken to them too, so county council would like to negotiate with you. They've said, at a couple meetings that I've been to, that you have not returned phone calls or emails to them. There's been countless ones, and they have not been returned. Now, I find that hard to believe, but I do think that as our representatives, that you should reach out to them, and if they call you, call them back, email them back. Because we need government to work together. This issue, like I said, affects 33%, and it is causing a lot of anxiety into the, in the city. We know there are other problems. There's violence. There's shootings. There's flooded properties, but we need government to work together. And if I had my wish, I would invite you all to Panera, buy all coffee, lock you in a room, and have you all work it out. I hope that you will do something like that on your own. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Next citizen to be heard, John Groh.
Can I just say one more thing?
I'm sorry you can't.
I'm sorry, all right.
Time's up, but thank you. We have all these people who want to talk, so I've got to keep the rules.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay there?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. This is rather different, me speaking before the city council. I do appreciate the offer, the opportunity to do this, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, and the rest of council. I'm John Groh, chairman of the Mill Creek Township Board of Supervisors. I'm here on behalf of the Board of Supervisors in regards to some names that we have submitted for consideration to be appointed to the Erie City Water Authority. Just to go over those names again, we have Louis Arcovio, who is, of course, these are all Mill Creek residents. He's a retired insurance broker. Dean Swanson, who is a banker with Northwest Savings Bank, and also former chairman of the Mill Creek Water Authority, and Mr. Russell Thompson, who is a Mill Creek businessman and concerned citizen. So, we have, of course, submitted those names. However, I understand that those names have already been submitted for consideration for appointments to the, to the board. We have nothing, no problem with those names there ourselves, although those were not names that we submitted ourselves there. But there's another issue that I would like to talk about. It's not really an issue, but it's something that we need to consider here, folks. At the time that Mill Creek Township Supervisors entered in negotiations for the sale of the Mill Creek Water Authority to the Erie City Water Authority, we'd looked at a couple of different things here, but one of the main things that was a matter that we really didn't push a whole lot was the articles of incorporation that the city council controls. And we believe, not only us, but the city water authority also believes that those need to be amended for several reasons, and I don't want to go through a complete laundry list as far as legal things there and stuff, but I really ask that we do consider some things here. As it is currently written, the document, the charter, it only includes an area of what was being served up until 1989 by the Erie City Water Works. That has expanded, so, but yet the ability for people to serve on the authority is not really there. So, that's one of the reasons why these need to be amended. But also, the way that the appointing is done, there is some question about that, too. I mean, I'm not, you know, saying anything wrong there, but I'm saying that what is written down on the charter is different than how it's being done. So, if we can get this thing worked out, I'd like to remind city council, in case you don't know this, the Mill Creek water system, as we sold to the Erie City Water Authority, now makes up 30% of the customers that the Erie City Water Works has, serves water to. So, we're a vital interest in this right here, so we hope that you would consider that. And I guess last, but now at least a couple of words about regionalism. I think we all agree, regionalism is good. It's good for everybody, and it's not just a buzzword or a buzz phrase. It is something that benefits everybody in the Erie community, whether you live in the city or outside. Everybody benefits from that. That's one of the reasons why myself and a fellow supervisor joined on this to sell the Mill Creek Water Authority. We saw the regionalism potential there, and we hope we can see that come through. I ask that city council really consider what regionalism means for all of us. We all benefit from that. So, if you would like, we'd be more than happy to sit down with you if you want to do that. I know it's kind of odd for me to throw that out there, but whatever we can do to help you out, it's not to say help you out, but maybe give advice. You guys know how to do this stuff, but if you need some help as far as comments of how we, you know, could have some influence on that, we really would appreciate that there. I do thank you for your time, and thank you. Appreciate that.
Supervisor Groh, always a pleasure to see you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next citizen to be heard, Mr. Gary Horton.
Good evening, council. My name is Gary Horton, 2046 East 19th Street, Reverend E.F. Smith, Quality of Life Learning Center. I'm here this evening, as you already know, to address you on behalf of the families that we serve and the fact that the city administration is recommending zero support of our agency from this year's allocation of community development block grant funds. We requested approximately $60,000. approximately $60,000 for two initiatives. One is a year-round after-school or educational program that we operate, that we believe is a best practice for children. And the other one was an Invest Erie, an opportunity to give us the ability to go out and to join you, and to try to bring investment to poor neighborhoods in Erie, so that some of us don't have to come back before you seemingly like we're begging you every year to give us back some of our tax support. The Green Senate Administration has said zero to us. Now, they say it is because of the number of applicants they have for community development block grant money, and the many good projects that people have submitted. They say they can't fund them all, but we believe they can fund more. We believe they count a lot, too. This administration has never recommended, in 11 years, an allocation of support for the Quality of Life Learning Center. Not once. Not one of you, sitting there this evening, have ever voted for or recommended an allocation of support for the Quality of Life Learning Center since you've been there. Not one of you. And yet, you tell us we do good work. You look at the children that we graduate from high school and we send to college, you look at the fighting that we have decreased between the new Americans, you look at the things that we have accomplished, you listen to us for 18 months, talk about John Horan and the John Horan model, and the success of John Horan's approach to immerse his developments with activity and resources that have resulted in public housing having the safest developments in the city of Erie. Somehow, that just doesn't seem fair to us. We serve more youth than every other agency that he is recommending to fund. We serve more new American youth than all of the agencies added up together. We have students from the USA, Ukraine, Uganda, Togo, Tanzania, Sudan, South Sudan, Sierra Leone, Puerto Rico, Somalia, Nepal, Liberia, Kenya, Iraq, Guinea, Ghana, Eritrea, the Democratic Republic of Congo, China, Cameroon, Burundi, Bhutan, Zambia, Yemen. Not none of the other agencies added up together serve the population that we serve. Now, that seems so different from the city, as reported in the Erie Times News the other day. Their effort to count these people in the census in order to grow Erie's population and stabilize Erie's population to qualify for more federal funding, that just doesn't seem fair. The CDBG program, as we Googled it, it says is to ensure decent affordable housing, to provide services to the most vulnerable in our community, and to create jobs through expansion and retention of business. CDBG is an important tool for helping local governments tackle serious challenges facing their community. HUD determines the amount of each grant by using a formula comprised of several measures of community need, including the extent of poverty, population, housing overcrowding, age of housing, population growth lag, in relationship to other metropolitan areas. They did not list crime. They did not list crime. Then they say the granting must develop a detailed plan, the plan must provide citizens...
Thank you for your time, Mr. Horton. Thank you for your time, your time's up. If you want to leave your comments, we'll collect them. At this point, any other citizens that want to be heard, you can get in line, and you have your five minutes.
Richard Wagner, 42nd State. Hey, and you're all lucky to have Gary Horton as an advocate. He's doing a great job for you people. Unfortunately, if someone appears...
Excuse me, if you can please be quiet. If you want to take your conversations out in the lobby, you're free to do so, but in here, we're conducting a meeting.
Okay, I'm...
Sorry, I apologize.
Unfortunately, if someone appears before Council and expresses an opinion contrary to yours, you want to portray those people as negative and contrary to all the efforts being placed to turn, being placed to turn the city around. I beg to differ. When one of my biggest personal investments lies in the city of Erie, I feel it my duty for myself and my family to express my discontent with your actions. And as I have said in the past, government isn't working for the people who are paying for it. You are gambling with my future. Couple weeks ago, you held a study session with Mr. Badams, and after that study session, you all signed a letter of concern to the governor. I find a certain irony that Mr. Badams and his school district have been threatened by a strike by its employees. And one of the officers of that union that signed that letter to the governor works for the same unit that voted for a strike. It almost seems hypocritical to me. At the last meeting, one of my esteemed councilmen threatened to investigate every contract going through the city. It seems that one of his friends was called in to question over a contract because he hadn't paid some utility bills. I'm sure the rules are obvious, but no one sitting on this panel should ever make threats like that to the contractors that follow the rules of law pertaining to work within the city. And lastly, I questioned a $375,000 sale price of 14 acres at 12th and Green Garden. I couldn't help but read that one of our councilmen said that it was considered a brownfield site, subject to cleanup. I'm investigating that comment. We often get caught up in numbers. For all of us, a million dollars is an enormous amount of money. Not many of us can understand how much a billion dollars is. I'm going to make it clear to everyone just how much 41 billion is. First, let me explain to you, 41 billion is the amount that the Persers and Seres Retirement Fund is underfunded. The city and school district, under a new formulation known as Act 120 of 2010, have had their contributions to this retirement fund increase dramatically. Here's the fact that should bring a billion into reality. If you took the entire operating budget of the Erie School District of $160 million and gave that amount to the pension fund, it would take 250 school years to make that pension plan solvent. 250 years of running this Erie School District to make the pension system solvent. Just think about that for a minute. The comprehensive plan, I'm sure all of you have done your due diligence and read the entire plan submitted by Mr. Berkey. I took the time to read the cover letter, and the thing that jumped out at me, and I'm sure it was just as shocking to all of you, is that you'll have to embrace and work with the public. What a thought. After devoting all this time, Mr. Berkey hasn't realized that my council doesn't rely on or care much about anything that comes from the public. Five minutes, citizens to be heard, no dialogue. A mayoral assistant, who happens to live closer to Edinburgh than Erie. Economic development heads, who over the last several administrations have been from McCain, Waterford, Waterford again, and now Fairview, and that most of the employees of this building don't live in our wonderful city. That should have provided Mr. Berkey with enough insight without asking one question as to what is wrong with Erie. I find that this administration, who waited 11 years to address these problems, is solely responsible for its demise. The only focus of this administration over the last 11 years has been to avoid Act 47, and I will give them credit for that. They did what they set out to do. But because of that focus, all of the other responsibilities of keeping Erie great were ignored, and now we are faced with a crumbling city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next citizen to be heard, please. Go ahead, name and address for the record.
My name is Bernie Przybywski. The last name is P.R.Z.Y.B.Y.S.C.E.W.S.K.I. And I am speaking on...
Your address, please.
It's 2669 Peach Street.
Thank you.
And I'm speaking on what Amy was talking about, about the EMTA. I don't know how much I need to transit. If EMTA goes, this city, this town, it's going to be nothing at all. Without it, we need, we won't be able to get around town. Everyone thinks that it's just only some routes, but when really, it's a whole, the whole caboodle. We really need this. And I don't know what else to say, but please, keep it here. Thank you.
My name is Andrew Vi. I live at 1027 West 37th Street. I commend Mr. Jones on his speech yesterday introducing Mr. Sanders. He mentioned that this area, this city, needs redevelopment and an influx of jobs and money. And so, I have two points I would like to make. The Regional Chamber of Growth Prophetship, under the title of Destination Area, collected data to produce a report on Erie as it is now. The traditional view of affordable housing is that it should be no more than 30% of the household's income, but this view ignores transportation costs, which are a household's second-largest expense, and which depend largely on the location, the neighborhood, where a household chooses to live. When transportation costs are included as a measure of affordable housing, there's only 15% of households in the county that are affordable. The other 85% of housing puts the families into poverty. Together, housing and transportation costs use up more than half the average household's income. That's data from 2009. Costs have gone up since then. I can mention several areas of the city of Erie where there is no bus service. 16508, south on State Street is one example. Real estate agents, property developers, have long been aware of the positive impact which mixed-use development around a nearby transit station has. It helps with the property values in a community. You may be surprised by the extent of this effect, measured in a study published by the National Association of Realtors. The study measures property prices during the last recession, which went from 2006 to 2011, across five other cities: Boston, Chicago, Minneapolis-St. Paul, Phoenix, San Francisco. It concluded that properties that were close to well-connected public transit stations kept their value better than other properties in the region by an average of 42%. It's true that a well-placed transit station can offer better access to jobs, shorter commutes, lower transport costs, and attractive lifestyle. However, the magnitude of greater performance in this study implies that these factors may be even more important than anybody thought. This finding certainly suggests that public transit stations might be the most powerful predictor of property value and resilience, but there's probably more going on for home buyers than their desire for an easy commute to work. Home buyers also want to be near schools, shops, hospitals, parks, restaurants, a great number of other amenities, and these businesses need transport links, too, so they are often also placed near transit stations. In effect, all the most desirable parts of an area get clustered around transit stations, creating livable neighborhoods where people want to keep their money local. Thinking about it this way, it's perhaps not surprising that those transit clusters proved so resilient during the recession. Please be aware of these statistics when you plan for Erie's future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
My name is Robin Lawrence, and I reside at 405 Reed Street. Okay, I want to talk about EMTA. Think of it as the 440 relay, okay? When it's time to pass, the time comes with a passive tone and let someone else run on, okay? Now, I also want to talk about the drivers, the morale of the drivers and everything. Passengers know that they can basically get away with anything with EMTA, because, for instance, a passenger might get on the bus and is acting unruly or whatever, doesn't want to pay or whatever. The driver calls to dispatch, oh, let them go, just let them go. The children with their bus passes, they're misusing the privilege that they have. So, now, it's like, they don't even show their passes anymore, they just, you know, just punch them in. And so, I said to somebody, I can't believe that Dr. Badams would know that the children are doing all this stuff and nothing's being done. Well, they're not telling the school board, the school district, that these things are going on. What I'm trying to say is this, carrying a bus pass is a privilege, okay? But it also comes with responsibility, okay? Also, when it comes to, like, backing the drivers up, several months ago, a driver was hit in the face, in the side of the face by an ice ball. It's like, the drivers do not have the backing that they should have from the administration, okay? So, I basically think that it would be good for, to kind of tear that plan up and start it over again, and have a chance to see how, it's been done this way for a long time. There's nothing wrong with trying something new, okay? Also, I believe that professionalism is very important, okay? I think that if I'm, if I'm, if I go to EMTA and something I'm doing is not correct, I believe that a person should address me in the proper manner. For instance, I was there to pick up my friend from work one evening, and yes, I know the sign said no parking, okay? But I'd just been there for about five minutes. Okay, now, it's not, it's not the fact he said it to me, it's the way he said it to me, okay? You have to speak to people in the right manner, because you represent the company when you're speaking to people, you know, by the way, you speak to a person. So, I feel like the whole thing just needs to all be, all turn up, new plan, start it over again, let's begin to run this city in a professional way. It's, every time I think about Allentown kicking us out of the way and becoming the third-largest city of Pennsylvania, and we had it, that just makes me, that disgusts me. In other words, I think, I'm tired of seeing a few people trying to determine the growth of this city. This is a great city that we live in. When you think about all the wonderful things that happen, you know, you know, the flagship Niagara, all of that, you know, we, this is a great city. But it seemed like we seemed to take small steps to try to go where we need to go, because people want to try to determine how the growth of the city. And it, you know, we just need to just move on and get our position back as the third-largest city of Pennsylvania. But not just that, also, we have to think about the legacy that we leave to our children, you know? We need to be a better example to our children as well, okay? Like, for instance, okay, you ride the bus, you get on the bus, be quiet, talk quietly, do what you're supposed to do, and move on. Disruptive behavior on the bus, all it does, it upsets everyone, and then when the bus drivers call in and try to say something about it, they need to have been told that the police department really doesn't want to do anything about it. I thought, well, I find it hard to believe when their job is to serve and to protect, okay? So, I think the drivers need a lot more support from the company than what they're getting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next citizen to be heard, please.
Greetings, Council. It is truly an honor to be here on behalf of the At-Risk Girls here in the Erie community. on behalf of the At-Risk Girls here in the Erie community. My name is Shawnte Poiam. I'm the founder and CEO of Nurturing Hearts, located at 32 West A Street, Erie, Pennsylvania. And Nurturing Hearts is a self-esteem and self-development nonprofit organization for at-risk girls. And the mission of Nurturing Hearts is to provide supportive leadership and life skills that furnish and prepare at-risk girls 10 through 18 for a bright and positive future. For the past 10 years, we've helped young girls here in the city of Erie who have been physically, mentally, emotionally, some of them sexually abused, growing up in single-parent homes and in foster care units. We provide six-month programs and three-day workshops that are geared towards positive self-esteem, healthy lifestyle options, etiquette, leadership skills, mentoring, tutoring, financial literacy. We take a holistic approach in combating the issues that young girls face here in the city of Erie and Erie County. Statistical headlines state that Erie has the highest teen pregnancy and juvenile probation rate in the state of Pennsylvania. So our numbers are escalating Philadelphia, Harrisburg, Pittsburgh. Some of the risk factors for these statistics include suicide, unemployment, poverty, violence, and crime. With organizations like Ganondale and Ophelia no longer in existence, we need organizations like Nurturing Hearts to be funded and supported by our city. If not, those statistics will get worse. I see young girls the ages 12 and 13 getting pregnant, 12 and 13-years-old. And they're getting pregnant by younger boys between the ages of 13 and 14-years-old. The thing with that is 13- and 14-year-old boys cannot find jobs. So if they cannot find jobs, where are they going to get money from to support that child that they have? Can you guess? They're going to get it from the streets. They're going to get it from selling drugs. They're going to get it from selling heroin into our counties and cocaine into our cities. And then, from there, the violence comes. And then after the violence, the blood sheds in the streets. And that's what we're seeing now. That's what we're seeing today in our community. So as you finalize the CDBG allocations for programming, I strongly suggest you keep this in mind, that Nurturing Hearts is one of the answers to the problems we see in our community today. We have been blessed to sustain ourselves for the past 10 years without any funding from the city. But it is not easy. It has been a struggle. So we have requested $7,500, just $7,500 for programming support. I encourage you not to just fund the new of this year or last year youth initiatives, the new of this year programs that are starting in our city, until you first consider Nurturing Hearts, who have been changing the hearts and lives and future of at-risk girls in our city since 2006, because we are fulfilling a great need and making a difference in the city of Erie. Let's not be so focused on paving the roads that we forget to pave the way for at-risk girls in the city of Erie. And I leave with this quote: "If you teach a boy, you educate an individual; but if you teach a girl, you've educated and saved the entire community." Thank you.
Since they can't understand me, I know you was going to ask that question.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
You can make your comments.
Okay. Anyhow, my name is Shakuru, and I attend the Quality of Life Learning Center. I'm not from here. I'm African, and I speak three to four different languages. And the Quality of Life Learning Center helps me in multiple ways. I play soccer there. They help me with homework, anything I need, they help me with them. It's like a second home for me. So, I mean, it's kind of a surprise to see that it haven't been funded for like 11 years. That is a surprise to me and to others right here. I came here today with Mr. Horton to ask, because we all want the QALC funded, like... There is, I mean, like you said, there's a lot of people that go there. There's a lot of new Americans that go there than all the other after-school programs you guys have funded. We feel cheated, like, we feel like we're not being included. For us to get zero amounts by other after-school programs or getting like, for example, like $6,000. Like, I heard the YMCA got up to like $50,000. But we get nothing. That's kind of a shame. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Binge Kashidi. I'm from Congo. I speak four languages, attending East Star School. I go, I go to Equality of Learning Center for help and apply for colleges. They helped me. Ms. Walla there helped me, but there, she helped me a lot. Right now, I'm attending Penn State because of her, she helped me. We can't do this without them helping us. We need their helps. And we need the money for the Equality of Learning Center, because they help us. We can't be coming here every day for asking for help when you know we need help. Our parents go there because they don't speak English. They help them finding jobs and learning that, speaking English. They go there in the morning. We can't just be coming every day begging for money for help, helping the Equality of Learning Center continue. We need the money. And we, I'm not here asking or begging, but I'm here to tell you guys to give us the money, because we, we have the work, we have the money. In America, we told us that, we told us that we all equal. And we should be all equal. We should give us the money. We need the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Binge.
I'm a Hodor. Joweni Tagarasa Ni Tanga. I go to Erie Rise Leadership Academy Charter School. And through the Quality of Life Learning Center, for all the three quarters of my school year, I'm on straight A's, because they helped me over there with all my homeworks and stuff. Why I'm here today is I'm asking you guys to help us with the money. Without them, I don't know, I don't know if I was beginning my A's and stuff. I feel like they're my second home. And I know they're my second home. Every day, I wake up, because I know that they're going to support me with my homework and stuff. And I hope that you guys will support us too.
Hi, my name is Kumba Faya. I'm 13-years-old. I'm in the seventh grade. I go to Woodrow Wilson Middle School. I'm from Liberia. I speak only two languages. I've been to Mr. Horton's Center since I've been, since I was five. And I'm here today to ask you if you can please help the Quality of Life Center by giving us the amount of money we need, because all of us, because all of us think it's not fair that they give the other programs such as the YMCA up to $50,000, and they give us zero. So all we ask is if you can please give us that much money or more. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melody. I'm eight-years-old. I go to St. Luke's School. I'm in second grade. I speak one language, which is English. I started coming to the Quality of Life Center when I was three. And today, I came to ask you if you can please give the center the amount of money we deserve, because we really need it. Thank you.
This is the first time I ever got to raise the microphone for myself. So Refocus Erie. My name is Veronica Rexford. I live at 4124 West Ridge Road, and I work at the Quality of Life Learning Center. Refocus Erie is our comprehensive plan discussing an assessment of our resources, and it talks about restoring community. It talks an awful lot about disinvestment in our built environment and the things that we need to do to change in order to restore that investment. But it discusses restoring a sense of community as well. Recent decades of public and private disinvestment coincided with the decline in the tight-knit sense of neighborhood that typified the city during much of the 20th century. To a large extent, the social fabric of individual residential blocks has frayed, producing the increasingly common scenario where neighbors are strangers to one another. Restoring an ethic of reinvestment, of mutual reinvestment, is fundamental to the healthy functioning of markets, but more so to the social contracts, and I would argue, to the citizens that make markets work, that make neighborhoods work, and that make cities strong. The plan talks about how the city is competing for educated young adults in the region. If what we are about to do is not likely to result in increasing the city's share of young adults in the region, it should probably not be done. Page 30. Moving towards a fairer regional share of poverty and wealth, which I would argue is directly connected to the Community Development Block grant funding. Concentrated poverty has long been a problem in the Erie region, one that inhibits the ability of poor families to escape poverty and for the city of Erie to achieve financial stability. Ask before acting, if what we are about to do is not likely to result in a more socio-economically balanced city, it should probably not be done. So my concerns to sum up with the CDBG funding. There is a very small allocation geared toward services for youth. By my count, the total is $93,909. And I would ask, is there a commitment to encourage our youth to be part of a vibrant community or only a commitment to enforcement? I can't help but see the contrast. The total budget for enforcement in the entire budget of the city is $24 million, and the CDBG funds of $500,000 brings the total to $24.5 million. The Integrated Disbursement and Information System reports are the city's report to HUD about the benefit of Community Development Block grant funds to community members. And I know I'm not going to get through all this in three minutes, but I'm going to leave you a set of my materials.
Thank you.
Under Public Services, in the 2009-2010 report, the line item, "Youth Services", under "Number of Persons Benefiting", says 504. 504 kids? There are about 24,000 residents of the city of Erie who are under the age of 18. In the same report, the contrast is amazing. The number for crime awareness, number of citizens benefiting, is 51,676 individuals. The next year, youth benefit, 405 youth. Crime awareness, 31,317. 2011, 12, youth benefit, 270 children. And don't forget, 24% of the residents of the city are under the age of 18. The crime awareness, 32,448 people. 2012, 13, 488 youth benefited from public services programs. Crime awareness, 51,676. The most recent year available, 2013-14, 356 youth benefit, 51,676 in crime awareness. That is a stark contrast between funding and prioritizing for prevention and positive growth versus enforcement. Why is this a problem? Our youth are desperately hurting. The Pennsylvania Youth Survey, which I assume some of you at least are familiar with, shows that our young people, who are surveyed in grades 4, 6, 8, 10, and 12 in the city of Erie public schools, and indeed across the state, are reporting higher risk factors than the state average in a staggering number of categories. Symptoms of depression: Feel depressed or sad most days of the month. Sometimes I think life is not worth it. At times, I think I am no good at all. All in all, I am inclined to think I am a failure. Suicide risk.
Thank you for your time. Ms. Roby, I think she's going to leave some materials for you.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
It's good to see all these children down here, young men and women. This place should be filled all the time. That'll give y'all something to think about. But if nobody come down here, you don't, you don't think that they're aware of you all? You're supposed to be our leaders. But they got to come down here and beg for our tax dollars. We're paying taxes. They should benefit behind some of that money that you're spending. Here, you're going to send $461,000 out there in Little Italy. Is that the only part of the city that counts? You got more than Little Italy. You just put a lot of money out through there. What's, what's going on? I don't understand it. Y'all can't, have you started working on that, for their summer jobs? It's important to those kids to have summer jobs. They'd rather to work than for you to walk up to them and give them a few dollars. They would rather earn their weight. And I can see that, because that was the way I looked at it when I was coming up, and I was taught like that. If you want kids to be good, you better do some good things for them. It's not coming out of your pocket. These kids should have summer jobs. Are you working on it? Or do you want, want them to land up down there behind bars or get shot at out there? And there's a lot of that's going on. I don't know why. I wish I did. But if I, if I knew and told y'all, you would pay it no minds. You got to start listening to what the peoples want and not what you want. You don't know what we want. You don't know what you want. We got some good kids. We got some good kids out there. And we want them to stay good. We want them to go to school and graduate and go into college. I want them... I want them to have it better than I did. When I was 16, I was out on the railroad, picking up 30-foot pieces of track. My back hurt now. I don't want them to be like that. I want them to go to college. I want them to sit down like you all are sitting up there. Get them some education. Ain't nobody going to hire no dummies. Dummies go to jail. Some of y'all need to be in jail. A lot of those laws is being passed. They're passing those laws. They're passing them on somebody else, and they should be passing them on themselves, because they the ones should be in jail instead of the kids. Now, if you don't do something for these kids and some of them lying up in jail, it's on you. It's on you. You, you haven't, them shootings don't affect y'all too much. It don't seem to. You're not doing anything about it. Them guns coming into town, you should be able to run them down. You're not even trying on that. All you worried about is spending money. And it's, ain't nothing wrong with that. And it's, ain't nothing wrong with that. But spend it for the right thing. Spend some money on these kids. I wished I was able to give them some summer jobs. I would give every one of them if I had the money. But the money come through y'all's hands, and it's our money, our tax dollars. Y'all could do better than you're doing. I know you can. I know you can. If Joe tell you to do something, you'll jump up and do it? And jump over each other trying to do it? Let's do better by our kids. Our kids deserve more. They deserve better. Here you finna hire three policemen. Utilize them you got out there. You're not utilizing them. Forty-two thousand dollars a year. The teachers don't start out like that, and we need the teachers more than we do the policemen, because if you teach the kids right, you won't need the policemen on their tails. I want y'all to get on the stick.
Thank you for your time. No, 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 thank you for your time. We appreciate you.
You should, when somebody's.
Thank you for your time.
Let them leave.
I had to be fair to everybody. I told them, we have such a big crowd today. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Mary Ann Hack, and I live at fourteen twenty-nine West Twenty-Sixth Street. And I'm here for a totally different reason. I belong to the Women's Club of Erie. We have owned and managed a mansion in Sixth Street at Sixth and Myrtle. Our mission is to preserve that building for future generations. I'm here to thank you because your recent interest in historic preservation is an interest of ours. We like that the city is getting involved with history because we have lost so many nice buildings in the city, and especially in the Sixth Street District. Our mission says that we are interested in historic preservation, and we would like to become involved too with the city in their efforts to preserve these nice buildings. I would like to invite anybody from the council, in fact, you could even have a meeting there, to our building to see what we've done. We want this building to maintain, and we want the other historic buildings in the city of Erie to be maintained as well.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nyong Koloey, eighteen sixteen Glendale Avenue. I'm here today to talk on behalf of Gary Otten, Quality of Life Center. I grew up there personally. I was like this kid who have come here today. I'm a graduate student at Gannon University. I'm doing my MBA. And I could say to you personally that I'm proud member of this community. I grew up in the Quality of Life Center. Been going there since I was in high school. And after I graduated from high school, went to college, and then went to graduate school. And that's what I'm working on right now. And not funding the center for eleven years to me, as the kid just said long ago, is ridiculous and doesn't make sense. We need funding. Quality of Life needs funding. And funding, without funding, these children you have seen here today will do the same thing that we always see in the community. Problem after problem. They need jobs, as has already been said. And on my behalf personally, I would like to say thank you for the job that the city have been doing to the city of Erie so far. But we need more and do more, and thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Andy Russell. I'm twenty-fourth and State. Some of you I know, some I don't. Basically, I came down here because of the EMTA issue. I recently got a car for the first time, but I did ride the bus for like thirty years. And I didn't exactly like it, but you know, it's all right. I don't know what the details are between the city and the county. But what I do know is, I believe it's being funded by the taxpayers, whether it's city or county or state. So either way, it's not the government's money. It's really the people's money. I don't even have a job, and I feel like I'm trying to look out for the taxpayers more sometimes than the government does. And I won't even get on when I think of the mayor's administration or anything. I don't even know what to say about that. But basically, as far as the other things that are going on in Erie, I have some ideas on my website, fixeri.com. I'd like everybody to go to. Some of you probably have already. The back and forth with the city and county, I don't know what that's about. But I would think that I think it was a good idea someone had to maybe start over again and be a little innovative for the twenty-first century. Maybe sell some of the equipment, maybe downsize, use different sizes for different routes that don't have a lot of people, run to the end of second shift and the beginning of third. But I don't know why the city and county can't run, you know, work together, because I expect that from the federal government and the state government to be inefficient. You know, I don't expect them to do anything right, really. But that means we have to do it ourselves at the local level. And, you know, if the county and the city can't even agree on, you know, buff service, which like someone said, serves one-third of the people in this area, and then you have this issue with the McBride Vidaque they've been talking about for five years. I mean, the people like, they don't take any of that seriously, you know? My thing is just, how much does it cost to tear it down? How much does it cost to fix? Go right to the people, take a vote. You know, if you want to do it, we'll do that, or we'll do that. And if we don't do it, you know, we'll just have to have somebody else be elected at office, you know, at election time. I mean, really, it's the only thing. I know some of you guys are, you're good and you do a lot of good, but the thing with the city and the county, it just looks really stupid, to be honest. You know, I don't watch the news much. But I hope you guys will do something about that. Maybe the city and county could meet once a month, like they do in Indianapolis and some other places. I know the format's a little different, but it might be worth it. And as far as the violence, I don't even know what to say about that. You know, people are going to the rich neighborhoods and buying drugs, and then, in exchange for guns, and then they're reporting them stolen. A lot of them are coming in from Detroit and other places. You know, they're bringing people here and doing this and that. So whatever that's going on, I don't know. But when I go over Twenty-third Street or Twenty-Fourth or Twenty-Fifth or any of these places, I see a hundred, two hundred, three hundred kids and teenagers just standing in the street doing nothing, basically getting in trouble. I don't know where their parents are. I won't even comment on that, but, you know, I don't know what to say about it, what to do about it. I would think with the noise ordinance, the littering ordinance, and the loitering ordinance in the city that are not being enforced, really, not that I ever see, basically, I think they should either be enforced or just get rid of them. That's, you know, really, that's what I would say about that. Anything else, I don't know. Just go to fixeri.com. That's all I can think of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Nicholas Catravone. Twelve seventy-one East Twenty-First. I'm here for Erie Metropolitan Transit Authority, speaking behalf of disabled, as myself is, and trying to get appointments. Just gonna have to re-sign that agreement, I guess, or it should be an ongoing thing. It should never be taken out. Because too many people, they rely on it. Myself too, for like daughters' appointments or just appointments you gotta take and probably for like future reasons, like. Everybody's gonna have to take a bus sooner or later. Because all these cars, nah, they ain't gonna stay up with it because it's just too harsh on the atmosphere. Not gonna be able to take that. But you gotta have to re-sign that charter or whatever, Erie Metropolitan. For kids, myself, like, you know, disabled or dumb, I don't know what you call them. People that can't drive, I don't know. And it's been around for, what, decades? Can't, can't get rid of that. Well, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is John Bibi. I live in seven fifty-five Tacoma Road. And I'm standing here to speak about the Quality of Life Learning Center. For sure, Quality of Life Learning Center needs support from the, from the city of Erie. And I realize that because it is a very, very important organization here in, in this community of Erie. In terms of educations, they are providing a very good support to the kids, and not only to kids. I myself, I'm a good example. When I come here in America, I couldn't speak even a single word in English. I started learning English in the Quality of Life Learning Center, and now I can speak, you can hear me. With that said, currently, I'm a leader of the Congolese community. I'm a chairman. The Quality of Life Learning Center is giving services to my community members, over five hundred people. Women's, youth, children, they are all getting services there, such as transportation, after-school program or education. They're also getting ESL, English as Second Language, there. They are getting a lot of services being offered by the Quality of Life Learning Center. So the city supporting the Quality of Life Learning Center is supporting a lot of communities, a lot of nations. Like we knows, there is no community center here in Erie that is serving more new Americans than Quality of Life Learning Center. Quality of Life Learning Center is really serving people without discrimination, with no segregation, in equal opportunities. Searching for a job for them, right now I'm working, purposely because of them, because they teach me English. I can speak English. From there, I can get a job and contribute to the community economy. So being supporting them, you are actually supporting the community in general. Look at these young childrens. They'll only be the Erie Council leaders like you tomorrow. So supporting them today, the greater community you are creating tomorrow. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mishu Chala. I came to support Otten, Gary Otten.
Excuse me, ma'am, can you put your, state your address, please?
Okay, my address?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Mishu Chala. I'm living in eighteen twenty, twenty-second D, Buffalo Road.
Thank you.
Apartment five. I came to support, I came to support Quality Learning Center. Thank you. My presence here, I present all the women, and I want to defend the women's rights and the children's rights. I'm an immigrant. I'm coming from Congo Republic, and I speak six languages. Included, English is my second languages. From this Equality Center, I found the opportunity to go to Mercedes University and learn intensive English program there, reading and writing. That's why I stand myself this evening to defend women's rights and the children's rights. The time we came here in America, the immigration tells us, you go to America with your children, and you'll be better, and your, your children, you'll be, you'll be, have a better life. So if our children is not studying, if our children is not working, how, how we can make them have a better life? We need your support to support us, women, mothers, single mothers, who brought the future American, the future, the future doctors, the future ministers, the future governor. It is up to you to support them today, to build them for the future. And to help us too, women, to empower us to create jobs, to create activities for women and the children, and to make up Erie. If you support us women and our children, I think we can empower the economy of America and the economy of Erie. Thank you.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
My name is Sam Moore. I live at eighteen sixty-four B, Buffalo Road. I'm here to talk on two things, two things that you have already heard about. And if you were in a voting situation, my one vote would have made a difference between you and somebody else fighting for the same position. So my one voice added to those that have spoken before me, I beg you, please. I want to talk firstly about the EMTA. I came to this country, and the EMTA took me around to my doctor visits, which I'm still doing. With the EMTA medical assistance, that, that bus, I don't know how a person like me will get around to my doctor visits, my hospital appointments. And the EMTA is important to us, people like me. So please, don't let anything deter you from keeping the EMTA here. I beg you. Do all you can do. Do all you can do to keep the EMTA. Secondly, I want to talk on behalf of the Quality of Life Training Center. A little girl, a little bright girl who live here is my granddaddy. She goes there, she has been going there since she was three years old. She goes there up to now. She does all of her homework there. I pick her up from school. Grandpa carry me to the center. That's the only place she knows. And she's an honor student in the second grade. She's on a city-funded scholarship. She, from where she does her homework at the Quality of Life Training Center. So please, ladies and gentlemen of the Council, we put you up there so you can be there for us. Please be there for us. Be there for our children, be there for our grandchildren. Don't let them get on the streets and be part of the gun violence. Please, keep them in school. Somebody once said that, if you train up, or if you teach a man how to fish, you're starting for a lifetime. Please, let's teach the children how to fish so they can beg for fish. I thank you.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
My name is Reverend Floyd Lewis. I'm the Executive Director of Joel Two Restoration Outreach, twenty-two oh one Reed Street. I'm also the Executive Oversight of the Youth Leadership Institute of Erie. My purpose after sitting and listening, I don't come just representing another youth program, although it's very important. I see that what's happening here is that you, as our council, sit in a very precarious positions because your job is to lead, to guide, to direct, to orchestrate, to bring about our way of living, our safety, the development of the communities. And all of this gets us into an area, when we talk economics, of money. So we have to take a little. So, we have to take a little and do quite a lot. And I understand that it's not a simple thing to do because those divisions cannot have total equality, but you must understand that where everybody needs something, that 50% of something is always better than 100% of nothing. We've operated the Erie Youth Leadership now for approximately about eight or nine years, but that's, that's just one of the things that all of the groups that represent and train and direct and get jobs for youth in this city, in our community, all contribute to a whole. We are raising and trying to develop those youth who one day will have your jobs. They will sit in these precarious positions that we're talking about. If Erie is to continue to grow and to become, we must train and direct these youth to become concerned citizens. We ask our kids in the youth institute to come. They've been here with you to see how council operate. They've been with county council. It gets to be a chimerical, a chimerical circus act sometimes, but let me give you some good news for you. We just completed this past weekend, we celebrated Global Youth Service Day. Erie is a very intricate part of Global Youth Services Day for a YFI for you because we are a part of a worldwide operation. Global Youth Service Day recognized this past weekend 2.5 million youth around the world to show their contributions, what they add to making nations and cities and things become. Erie has a very, very formative one because for you, also for your information, we are the lead agency for Northwestern Pennsylvania. And with Youth Service America, we are a part of a national organization. Our director went down, they asked him to come to talk to some of the other cities in America because we have a new program that they said is one of the most innovative programs that is happening with all of the youth services programs across the nation and across the world. There is a publication that's put out that we were surprised with, that Erie, Pennsylvania has been recognized around the world of what's going on in youth development. And you, as our leaders, should know this and advocate this for us. So, I, what we're asking is that we have a, uh, we have a, an individual that's working with us that we took on board as our youth service coordinator. We had no money to pay this person with of any substance because this individual quite has education, has background, that qualifies for a few of the positions that we're gonna, uh, pretend with G-CAC coming up, coordinator, she could fill any of those positions, but God gave us this young lady to work with us for substance so that we can do what it is that we are trying to do. I'm asking you to keep in your mind, as we go, we would need, in order to even maintain a position for this young lady, about a $5,000 increase of the few thousand dollars that we are giving her to continue that we will grow. We are building a future. And that future means that some of us, or probably all of us, will not even be around to see this thing what happens, but we will recognize and know that we are responsible because Erie can become a great city. Erie is a great city, and I just wanted you to know that we are recognized all around the world for just a simple effort. Help us make it a great one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, council. My name is John Whaley. I live at 447 Gordon Lane in Erie. Uh, before I start, I'd like to start off with a silent meditation. Allahu Akbar, Allahu Akbar, Allahu Akbar. Silent meditation. Five minutes isn't enough to even discuss all the things, but you have to admit it was an impressive number of people here tonight, over an hour and a half of citizens to be heard. They talked about transit, they talked about poverty, they talked about youth, they talked about blighted buildings. People are involved, they're trying to be involved, they want their voices to be heard, they're here asking for you to listen, and more than that, to help them. You all asked for the jobs, you all ran, you all spent money and time, you're giving up your time tonight with your family, just like they did. They would like to be heard and see some action. We spent $150,000 on a regional action plan. It was presented three weeks ago, the administration. And there's still talk of, we're gonna meet, and we're gonna have a meeting, and we're gonna look at it, and we all haven't reviewed it. I know that interim plans were provided along the way, and the final plan was given. It's been three weeks. Gun violence every day, people leaving the city every day, businesses announcing layoffs every day. We don't have a lot of luxury of waiting. It's a plan, it's not a plan, it's a report, but what is the holdup? I don't understand what's taking so long. Why does it take three weeks to even announce the first public session? We'd like to see some more action, we'd like to get it a little faster. Uh, those of you who are friends on Facebook, I put a post up today, a repeat of a post from last year, and it's a book, The Rise of the Creative Class. And if you would go on eBay or Amazon, you can buy that book for five to seven dollars, and you could have saved 149,993 dollars. Just read the book. It's word for word on some pages, what they talk about, what cities need, what they need to do. There's a lot of resources out there, already available. You now have another one, we're just asking for a little more action. Uh, EMTA, Erie Metropolitan Transit Authority, it's in the name, metropolitan, that means more than the city, it means the region. 22 of the 34 routes originate or end outside of the city of Erie. By nature, it's regional. We've talked about regionalism, the paper's talking about regionalism, this is a way to get started. Whether it's a power grab or not, whether it's status quo or not, I don't know, but I haven't heard that city council and county council sat in the same room at the same time to discuss this. I think we're headed that way. I've seen letters that say, uh, we're willing to meet if the lawyer does this, and we're ready. Can't you have coffee? I mean, can't it just be something and then talk about it? Because time is running out, and you have had years. I favor regional approach because the city has de facto run it forever, and the current administration has hand-pointed six people on the board. Those six out of nine appointed an executive director, then there was a new one a couple, you know, seven years ago, and then there was a new one like two years ago. I would argue the number one destination for the bus service is probably Mill Creek Mall. You can't buy a bus pass at Mill Creek Mall. So, however this, however it's run, however you're trying to help the citizens, however you want people to get around, somebody needs to talk to the EMTA and say, hey, maybe it would help if you could buy a bus pass at the single most, the largest employer maybe where people take the bus to. I've worked at the mall on and off for 25 years, and people always take the bus. Just, just a little thing, if the, if the city's running it, and you can't do that, then maybe the city's not running it as well as they could. Uh, CDBG, $70,000 is gonna go to a new code enforcement officer. I would hope you reconsider that. We have five now, they have a boss, he can get in a car and drive around. Um, the report that Charles Bukey wrote talked about targeting neighborhoods in every single code person, along with police, along with fire, go to that area and work two, three, four days. He didn't describe in that detail, but he talked about that. So, you bomb an area, and you go in, and you fix, and you find, and you fine, and you write up people, boom, then you go to the next block, and the next block. Hit some really targeted areas. It's a thought, but five people plus one, you got half a million dollars in payroll, I'm not sure you need another person. Uh, gun violence, nowhere in this agenda is word gun violence. It's erupting, it's out there. If you go on the internet, you'll find in 2011, the police chief said, we're working on a plan, and in 2012, council president at the time said, we're all about gun violence, and we're gonna solve it in 2013, and 2014, and 20... I, I don't see a plan. I still see reading the paper, oh, we're gonna do something, we're thinking about it, we might. It's out of control. Purchasing, we're gonna spend $800,000 tonight on out-of-town vendors, and that was just even a close, easy rough end. Thanks for your time.
My name is Edison Nicholson. I'm at, uh, 233 East 30th Street, and I'm here today to represent the Youth Leadership Institute of Erie. Before I start, I just want to say thank you to Sonya for coming out, uh, working with us with Global Youth Service Day this Saturday. Um, we had over 300 and some young people packed in East High School. By the time all of the, uh, numbers come out as far as the participating agencies, I think we're gonna hit about 1,400 young people that was actually involved in Global Youth Service Day this month and that. And so, we're proud of that event. Um, one of the things that I want to bring to your attention, I was talking to a young man, or young lady the other day, and, uh, she made the comment, we were talking about the violence. We were talking about an incident that, uh, transpired, um, over the weekend, and, um, she was like, don't worry, it gets better, summer's coming. And she was talking about the violence, you know, and she thought that was funny, but, um, I just happen to digest that, and I'm thinking to myself, summer is coming. What are we going to do about the youth violence? Um, we cannot overlook the fact that this type of stuff is happening, the violence, um, the guns, and the, everything that is transpiring in this community, we need to address. One of the things that I'm bringing forth to your attention, we have what we call assault team, our student ambassador leadership team. These individuals are responsible for going out into the community and giving back, um, putting their leadership skills into play. What I would suggest is that we form a commission. This commission is made up of 30 young people that represent this entire community. These young people address and look at the issues of youth violence in this community. Give them something meaningful to do, and that this commission can be led by some of you, and especially the, uh, police department, and that some of the individuals from our police department to help guide these young people, but these young people have something serious to give to you, um, in, in, in terms of, uh, addressing these issues in this community and that. I mean, I've sat and listened to some of them, and some of them have some stories that you guys need to hear. And so, I think they can help us address this issue. And I'm talking about 30 young people that actually represent the seg- different segments of this community and that, and put them together and give them a meaningful task and that. And I'm telling you, these young people will surprise you and that. So, if you're interested, I'm willing to sit down with any of you and help you put this committee together, and let them address this issue. You know, ask them, how do we go about addressing this issue? Bring young people on board and address them and that, and, and ask them, how do we address these issues and that? And, and I'm surpr- and I'm guarantee you, they will surprise you, and they will give you some of the answers that you need in order to address these issues we have with gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Saying none, we'll continue on with the meeting.
Ordinances for final passage. Council file number 15949, official ordinance number 112016, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $461,000 to be received as a burn criminal justice innovation grant from the U.S. Department of Justice for the BCKI Little Italy, Little Italy Program. By Mr. Jones and seconded by Mrs. Arrington, the council file ordinance bill number 15949, and now known as official file ordinance number 112016, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Potowski, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Marsky. City council pass official file ordinance number 112016 finally by a seven, nay zero.
Mr. President, motion move the balance of the agenda?
So moved. You have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Potowski. Any separations? Saying none?
Moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Potowski, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Marsky. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Committee reports, Mrs. Arrington.
Yes, Mr. President. Um, first off, I would like to thank Mr. Edison for a job well done Saturday with the youth. Uh, it was very rewarding to go in and be able to work with the youth on Saturday. Um, I was a coach, I had about 15 youth, and we built birdhouses. Mind you, I never built a birdhouse in my life, but it turned out pretty good. It was pretty exciting, you know, watching the kids have fun. We was at the soldier and sailor's home, we had kids planting flowers, we built birdhouses for them, we had kids inside doing exercises, and even some of the kids that was in my group wanted to volunteer this summer to go and, and help with the, the gentleman down there. So, it was an awesome day. I commend you on that, and, and I will definitely be back next year. And the next thing that I want to talk about, that's a subject that's very near and dear to me, is the violence that's going on in our community. It's sad that every day we losing our young men to violence. We have a whole generation wiped out from violence. We have to unify ourselves as a community, but one thing that I know for sure is, we have to keep these kids busy. I, I hear what everybody's saying about the CBG funds, you know, I agree, we need to put more mu- money into these programs for these kids, because if they're busy, they're less like, likely out to be out there getting into trouble. And as for the EMTA issue, and I can assure you, as a council as a whole, we're gonna do whatever we need to do to keep the buses moving and to keep our citizens on track. And with that said, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, you know, we heard a lot tonight. And I think sometimes when we, it's really important to hear the citizen's perspective. I think it's, I know that it's difficult to get in, you know, in a very clear way, uh, everything that may, they may want to articulate to us or share with us in five minutes, and it's kind of regimented and all of that, I get it. But I think it's really challenging for us, uh, as well, to kind of decipher, or cipher through, I should say, some of the minutia of, sometimes respectfully, the pomp and circumstance of, of some of these sessions because, um, just, maybe I'm being too blunt because I'm tired, I don't, I'm not sure, uh, respectfully, um, we have people in the room who give part, part of the story of a situation or a conversation, and then they get the opportunity to walk away and not have to have any responsibility for that. Uh, they don't have to make a vote, they don't have to deal with and interact respectfully with the citizens, they can just kind of come and say and keep it moving. Uh, I guess that's the liberty of not being an elected official, and in part of our responsibility, we, you know, be careful when you campaign, you just might get elected, right? Uh, so, I get that, but I, I think part of it is too, the people, the citizens need to understand that we make decisions not in a vacuum. We don't just kind of willy-nilly do stuff. Uh, we do with the best information we have, and we have to get information from a variety of sources, the administration, other authorities, other pseudo-governmental agencies and, and nonprofits and all of these, we have to spin the plates of balancing and trying to balance, um, all of these community issues and challenges, and, and often, many of the things that are addressed in this council from citizens are out of our purview. This is just a venue where there's an open mic and an open forum, where people can share and sometimes vent, and sometimes it, it's something we can do, and oftentimes there isn't, uh, something that we can do directly from, as a council. But what I will say is that, um, the youth violence in our community, well, no, the violence period, because it's not just youth, uh, of course, there are a lot of young people being victimized, and a lot of young people doing some things, but this is just a violence issue, and we can't make it look as if our children are the only ones committing crimes and the only ones that are doing violent acts in our community, they're not. Sad enough, sad to say, that many of the young people or individuals, period, of any age, that are active and strongly active in this type of behavior are not people who want a job. I mean, it's not like, you know, I didn't get a job last week, so I'm gonna go pick up a gun, and I'm gonna- going to go out and do something. Our kids are better than that, our community's better than that. Poverty in the pocket is not a good enough excuse to go in and violate someone else, and we need to stop condoning that with, even if it's just the assumption of that in blanket statements in public settings. Whether you have a job or not, or activity or not, listen, we had sticks for guns, and I know I'm not trying to age myself or anything, now I'm not trying to be ignorant or be even facetious at all, but a lot of this is not job-related or activity-related, it's caring-related. There are a lot of people, it doesn't take money to do and to occupy young people's time. It doesn't take money, because there's a 14-year-old that I was in the county prison with today, talking to, because I go into county prison on Saturday and mentor with men and talk to them, and I go in on Wednesdays now and mentor with juveniles that are in the county prison, 17 to 14-years-old. This 14-year-old couldn't get a job anyway. There's something bigger than just a job and activities to do. We got to start loving each other, caring about each other, quit being afraid of the young people, quit being afraid of the community members that are out here struggling, and be, and care enough to say, you know what, yeah, we need to do something better than this. And that's what it comes down to. Most of the time, we don't care enough to say hi to a kid, and care enough to be involved with a kid. It doesn't take money to do that. I feel very soapboxy, and I apologize for that. You know, but the irony of a lot of things that happened as I conclude, is that we got to do better. We just simply have to do better as a community, and it's not councilmatic, it's community-wise. It's not just the mayor, it's the citizenry as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Potowski?
Yes. I met with the Redevelopment Authority, and I'll have a further report for council. Park and Authority does not have their usual meeting, it'll be at the end of the month, and I'll report on that. Curtis, I appreciate your comments, and Sonya, and I won't speak anymore to that. I think Curtis said a lot, and so did Sonya. I want to address the issue of EMTA. We keep hearing it week after week. People come here and they say, we've been accused of not meeting with them. We did meet with them. So whoever says we did meet with them, don't believe that. We did. But I will say this, I will meet with them again, but I want to negotiate. I will not answer letters to the editor, demands, statements of what's going to be done, that's not negotiation. This isn't the Missouri Battleship, this isn't, this isn't Appomattox. It was more like Pan Moon John when we talked to them, okay? We did talk to them, but there was nothing but demands and what was going to happen. There was no negotiation. I mean, negotiation is when reasonable people meet and reasonable things happen. We are all concerned about the citizens of Erie, and it's not 33 percent, it's 40. And what they want to do is completely negate council and our representation of you, and I'm not going to do that. I care about the people of the Lower East Side, the Upper East Side, the Lower West Side, the Middle, everywhere. And council is not going to allow them to take away our voice, because I'll tell you, if you do that, you will have regionalism, but it won't help you necessarily. You know, you want to ask yourself, why do Mill Creek Mall don't participate? Do a little research. I did. You might be surprised. So, I mean, don't think this council hasn't met them halfway, because there was three or four of us that met with them, and there was no negotiation, just a statement of what's going to happen. That's not negotiation. Regionalism, I heard that today. Well, Mr. Bukey, I had the pleasure, well, not the pleasure, but I was stranded in airport for a couple of days, so I read that whole report over and over again, and Mr. Bukey was very prevalent about regionalism when he stated that it would take the cooperation of the suburbs and the county, true cooperation, not just cherry picking the best thing the city has to offer, but, you know, taking some of our problems also and helping us. You know, let's all approach this as a whole community, not the suburban versus the urban. You know, other communities have done that. It's not that way near you. You want to know why you got the disparity? You don't have to look very far. Mr. Bukey hit it right on the head. We talk about Little Italy. Little Italy applied for that grant, so I'm challenging the citizens on the East Side. The sisters are coming to the East Side, let's support them, and let's get a matching grant like Little Italy got, and let's do for the other East Side what they're doing on the West Side. And for all the citizens that came here today, you should equally go down to the county and attend all the authority meetings, every one of them. If you got problems with the EMTA, you're allowed to speak to them, address them. Don't just address us, address the county, address us all. Doesn't bother me one bit when you come here and challenge us, but challenge everybody. It's your right to address everybody. And as for bids, I heard that comment today. In my 12 years as Controller, very few people complained about the bidding process. But if anybody knows that the bids are being mismanaged in any way, you have merely the Controller or any member of council, and you can tell us why you think that local companies aren't bidding, because there are many reasons why some aren't, and a lot of it is just they don't want to get involved. But if somebody has a specific charge, please contact me or the Controller. And that's my soapbox.
Thank you, Mr. Potowski, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, with the EMTA, you know, it's been a partnership for, what, 50 years? We've been providing public transportation together, and I know that the panels agree on many of the items, and I'm sure, you know, like Mr. Potowski said, we do just need to come to an agreement and do real negotiation. But, yeah, I do know that we need to, we agree that continuous service is required. We need to improve on services, as always, and even the charter length, I think, could be shorter, I think there's been some agreement there. And I think that input from the ridership is very much needed. So a ridership panel, I thought there was somewhat of a panel that was out there now giving some advice, but I think that's very important. But again, I think we do need to negotiate and come together on some type of agreement. As far as the comp plan, I do want to say a few words about that. You know, since we've just unveiled the plan in our community, and the Planning Commission just approved it, and eventually, City Council will review that, I think everyone needs to realize that we have some very tough decisions ahead of us. As a member of both the Technical Committee and the Steering Committee for the plan, I've been contemplating how I can best support and lead any efforts in helping implement the plan. You know, we know we need to create changes, we know we need to plan for a better future for our city. All of our community, especially our leaders, need to embrace the plan, the principles of the plan, and we need to all work together to do what we can to engage the community and build a consensus around all the strategies for each of the neighborhoods. I think it's also important, what the Planning Commission had noted about trying to have some type of annual review, to plan, plan out priorities, define who's responsible for working on those priorities, and determine how we're going to go about financing, financing the initiatives. I think we do need to take these steps, we need to take this seriously, or we'll continue down the same path that we've gone towards, where we continue to see decline. So I think it's very important, and I'll do what I can to keep supporting those efforts. Another thing I just want to report about is I did participate in the Day of Caring last week. We cleaned up an area on East 19th Street from Prairie to Bayfront Connector. I want to congratulate all the students that came out, we had Mercy Year students, GAN students, Bike Erie came out, Sisters of St. Joseph's Neighborhood Network came out, and also the city, I want to thank the city for helping us. There was a pickup that they helped make to, we kind of put garbage in one area and they helped clean that up, so we appreciate the pickup that they, and the assistance that they gave us for that. Regarding the comp plan, again, there was a, there's a meeting coming up that Jefferson Education Site is going to talk about the plan, it's Tuesday, April 26 at 7:00 p.m. One of the planners is going to speak to us, if you want to learn more about it, if you haven't got a chance to read it yet online, you could do that. And then also, there's another event coming up, Bridging Erie Divide, a panel discussion. Architect Tony Griffin's going to be speaking at the Shiloh Baptist Church, there's a free luncheon. The topics will be urban design, race, and economic development, and it's from noon to 1:30. That's at 901 East 5th Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilman Harrington, Councilman Jones, Councilman Potowski, and Councilman Brennan for covering all the areas of my report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Just a few things to report. On the agenda today, we did have the resolution for hiring of two patrolmen. They will be sworn in tomorrow, I didn't want to steal your thunder, but they're not, someone was saying, well, we're adding new staff. No, people retire and then we add new people to replace people who have retired. So we have two new officers coming in, and we're very pleased to have them on, which will bring our complement to a full complement. The Burn Grant, as Councilman Potowski said, is a competitive grant that was applied for by Little Italy, and one of the components of that is going to be summer jobs. And the unique thing about this is it's summer jobs in that neighborhood, for the people in that neighborhood, the young people in that neighborhood. It's also targeting blight removal, it's going to include foot patrols, and then neighborhood development and improvements. So it's a very comprehensive grant, and it's augmenting the work that they've already done there, the great work of that Neighborhood Watch and the Sisters of St. Joseph's Neighborhood Network. We also have in here, in the agenda for today, paving, some of the paving, current rates, so paving will be coming up in the near future, so look forward to that. As people came up and spoke on summer jobs, I do want to remind people that the city just doesn't abdicate its responsibility towards summer youth and summer recreation. We do provide $750,000 in summer rec and summer jobs each year for the young people of the city of Erie, and that's not including the grant for Little Italy, and that's not including the almost 40% of the income that comes from the city to the county for summer jobs, the Summer Jam's program. So we do provide summer opportunities for our young people, to get them off the streets. Regarding the comprehensive plan, there's many challenges that Charles Bukey put in the plan, and we've all known what our challenges are. You just look on Facebook and you see them every day, but the solutions are going to be challenging, and it's going to require us to not do business as usual, and it's also going to require us to look at outcomes, not just output. And it's not just people served, it's how are we transforming neighborhoods and transforming communities? I look forward to that challenge, and, you know, we are working with, coordinating with economic development to roll out the comprehensive plan and the implementation phase of it. Contrary to popular belief, you don't get a plan on Monday and then start rolling it out the next day to the community. We have to read it, we have to meet as a council, understand it, we have to meet with the administration, make sure that we're all on the same page, meet with the community, which I think is very important, and get their input. You don't just, you don't go ready, fire, aim. I think that's reckless, and that's not how we do business. And finally, along those lines, the code enforcement, that's in the Community Development Block Grant, is part of the comprehensive plan to flank, the neighborhoods that flank the downtown is one of Charles Bukey's recommendations, is to solidify those. We would be working with Best, Erie Insurance, GAN and Gaines, our West Bay Front. So we're working with people who are already doing the work and supplementing what they're doing, and I think that's a big bang for your buck when you look at what we could do alone versus what we're doing together. And I do support those efforts, and that's all I'm going to report for today. I want to thank all the citizens who came out today and expressed their concerns and expressed their opinions. We do continue to work on the EMTA issue. As we work on it, I think it's important to understand that when the proposal on the table is, give us the whole thing or we pull our funding, that leaves very little wiggle room for negotiation. When you're in school and the bully says, give me your lunch money, or I'm taking your lunch, you don't give them half your lunch and say, here, don't take the rest. I mean, there's little room for negotiation. So we do want to negotiate, we do want to resolve the issue. That being said, the city of Erie, as Mrs. Arrington said, is committed to bus service for our residents, and we will work with PennDOT, and we will work to resolve the issue. I do want to also reiterate to the citizens, EMTA passed a charter, the city of Erie passed a charter, we're waiting on the county. The county says they want to run day-to-day operations of EMTA, but they've never explained to us, why do they want to run day-to-day operations of a bus company that they've never, they don't have any experience running a bus company? I take that back. They used to run the Lyft program, and they gave it to EMTA to run because it was mismanaged. So I am concerned when they express that they want control of day-to-day operations, because this council does not control day-to-day operations of EMTA. We don't. And I don't think there's anything broken with EMTA that can't be fixed within EMTA. And that's kind of where we are right now with that. We will continue to work, and I thank everyone, like I said, for coming out today and expressing their concerns. With that, Ms. Stankovich, any report?
I don't have any report.
And Administration, Ms. Beck?
Just want to invite everyone to a press conference tomorrow at 10:30. I didn't receive an email regarding the event, but there is a swearing-in, as President Mersky mentioned, 10:30, we have two new police officers that will be coming onto the force. Thank you very much to the U.S. Police Department for the fine work they did in the Frontier Neighborhood yesterday, horrific, ridiculous, completely random act that our community had to experience, and I just want to thank the police for doing a fine job, as well as our firefighters for the blaze that they fought over on 20th Street last week with the mattresses stored in the warehouse. Great job, great community support, great, every volunteer fire department in the area, all of our city firefighters were on duty, and we just are very grateful that nobody was injured to any extent. So thank you, and good night.
With that, this meeting is adjourned.
City Council adjourns at 9:43. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Potowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky.